The village of Webster, Oregon is now in session. Do you stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance and now if you would be with us?
My pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And give me a seat. All right, first item tonight of business is a public comment session, so I would announce that the public comment portion of the meeting is now open. And anybody who would like to address the board, podium, state your name. Thoughts?
I don't think we can talk about the update.
Okay, if we don't have anybody who would like to address the board this evening, then I will quote that portion of the meeting and we will move then to regular board business. First item is a resolution to approve minutes from the previous board meeting, August 22, 2019. If there are no comments, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Trustee Nancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item of business is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I did not have the opportunity to put all of them over. Al or Judy?
I did, yeah. We didn't really have any questions. We just had a lot of money spent on our vote and everything.
I want to broach.
Our vote and everything. I think if we had to redo something, but it's done now.
How about Brisbane for $399?
That is a trading for Marcia for Apple.
Right.
Jake, Northeast sweepers, a couple labor charges or something came back a couple times or something.
That's our rabble's, it's our street sweeper. I know there were some brushes for it and there was a issue with a leak underneath that they came to address. I have to look at exactly how the bill or what's happening when that was. Now, what's it go back here?
It's not. It's been hard to do.
Sweeper repair and pressure switch.
I have a comment. I don't know if it's the nature of the brushes, but I see a lot of the wires around those brushes in the village, throughout the village. There were a ton of them over at five year museum, whenever we're going out there. How often do we have to replace them because of loss of those wires?
Usually they wear down is when we replace them, when they get too short to operate. They get down four or five inches and that's when they're not, is affected. The brushes, I know when we're doing millings, milling is very tough on the sweeper. That could cause it, but I'm going to try to talk to the sweeper, to the company some more because you mentioned that a week or so ago where you brought in that one that was, that was ours. I haven't had a chance to talk to them yet by now if there's an issue with brushes or if they changed, because I don't recall seeing those before.
Yeah, I haven't seen them in over a year that we've had that, a tree or something.
Yeah. If there's no other comment or questions, then I would ask for a motion to approve
the minutes. I'll be.
Thank you.
Hang on a minute.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Nancy.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, I have no idea on the budget modifications and transfers because I don't have a copy of what goes on.
Don't you have it now? She teaches the.
Here. Is this got them?
Just standing.
Thank you.
I apologize. It's our first, it was mine and Marcia's first time to do a budget modification, so there were.
Okay, I believe we have two of them. The first is, the first is from AA 1325-100, clerk treasurer office personnel for $9,000 transferred to AA 135, 1325 dot 400 treasurer contractual for $9,000. That's for interim treasurer duties and training of the new treasurer's expenses not budgeted for initially. That's when Tim was here, I believe, so.
Are we done with that service?
Pardon?
Are we done with that service?
I.
He's been coming back like once every couple weeks. We would, I'm, I am, I will be asking, we ask him to come back for me to start budget so that we make sure everything is done correctly.
But it's not on a regular basis like it was before, so very determined.
Yeah, the last bill we got was for $300 and that was for like, that was a couple weeks ago.
And the second is from AA 1325 dot 406, maintenance agreement and software, $5,137 transferred to AA 1325-400, which is treasurer contractual for recruitment of new treasurer, $742 engagement of HR works for HR services and development of employee handbook expenses not budgeted for initially. If I can have a motion for approval of those two items.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Trustee Nancy.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next are the financial statements for August. You have a chance to look those over. Looks like we're in relatively good shape.
Yes.
Lots of zeros there in terms of percent view, so according to good shape. Any comments or questions? Want to argue those?
That's good. Good guy. Doing all right?
Yep. Move on to item four, excuse me, five, which is resolution to categorize the proposed wastewater treatment plant improvements as a type two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I have no further information on that, but I would take a. Is there any question on that? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution to categorize the proposed wastewater treatment plant improvements as a type two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Trustee Nancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The reason for that is to be prepared one way or the other if it's just a motion to categorize the proposed, that would be the improved or the wording, proposed improvements as a type two. Item, on the agenda, item number six is a resolution to authorize Mayor Byers to sign and submit the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WEAT II, and New York State Intermunicipal Water Infrastructure IMG Program Clean Water Grant Application. The information here is, I have a couple of them. One I think I see as a. Okay, burn them. Okay. I guess this might be, yeah. I think this would be Village Board of Trustees Resolution, September 12, 2019. Resolved that the mayor of the village of Webster, Monroe County, New York is hereby authorized, asks the official representative of the village to execute and submit application for grant assistance to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, under the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WEAT II, grant program for improvements to the village's wastewater treatment plant with a total cost of $5,600, excuse me, $5,657,000 and is hereby directed and authorized to act in connection with the submission of this application and to provide such additional information to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the receipt, use, and disbursement of said grant funds. My question is, this, is this a commitment on your part if we approve this tonight? Because there is no commitment right now to it.
Right, my understanding is not, there's not a commitment until there's an agreement signed if the grant is issued. You know, this is be able to move forward and be able to have your foot in the door to keep the options open. This is why it was explained so that we can at least have the, have the options that the grant decided the grants due tomorrow and be able to have those things turned in. And then once the grant, you know, if the grant comes back positive and has decided not to use the grant, then, you know, they go sign the contract or the grant. Most efficient allocation.
Because I would like to keep our options open, but I am not committing to any, you know, further progress or anything like that. Okay, if that's the understanding, that this is due tomorrow, did you, did you just say?
That's, yeah, that's my understanding anyway. If a grant is due tomorrow, I've got the other email up, but I think it's due the 13th.
Did I have a chance to look this over?
Yeah, it was sent with the packet. I got it at the same time you all got it, so whether it's, you know, apparently Lobella and someone, Clem Chung or someone over there prepared all this.
This was sent out to everybody the sixth.
I never got it on the sixth. The first, the first I saw it was in San Fran, so, you know, you guys may have got it on the sixth, but I haven't. Heather forgot to send me the agenda until I reminded her this morning.
Oh my God.
Well, look, I'm.
I almost forgot to say where you had.
Can you add that, please?
No.
So, you know, I can't vouch for anything that's in this application. I had nothing to do with putting it together. You know, so I don't know if there's like number eight that says to provide a current status update and it's a, it's a blank fact, so I assume somebody is going to fill in these things before that like the amount.
But I only is also.
So is two?
So is six.
Number five, it says describe the project, projects community impacts. Black box is blank, so I don't know if something's supposed to be in here, but so I don't. Yeah, I think we just kind of, I think one's been asking for a little bit and we just kind of said, yeah, go ahead, we want to keep our foot in the door for the grants. We saw what there was. Keep in mind this is a grant that we had a couple of years ago that we kind of knew we weren't going to get because we just kind of, we didn't have it completed. We put our foot in the door. EFC responded back that you have to do the shipload thing and the authorization, so that's what, they're trying to update that, the shipload and the seeker. So, okay, here's another couple pieces done. That's what they commented on last time. Here's another couple pieces done. Now this allows you to stay on that, you know, stay or be on that intended use plan for a minute and helps you get scored and see what the project scores with, when all the rest of it.
So then when is this going to be completed? I mean, do we have to keep on, as we fill in this stuff, would you send it to us?
No, this, I'm, I'm, oh, certain I know, I got an email yesterday where one said he owed me a phone call, but I think it went, typically when there's a grant due, they have more than one client, they're going crazy a week before, a couple of weeks before trying to get everything in. So, you know, they've been wonderful to work with up to this point. I have no reason to believe that he would submit half a filled out application or, you know, I'm sure this is what they highlighted, what they had and he's probably say, okay, here's what we have now, get that stuff and somebody else is, you know, working on filling in the blanks at the same time that they have to get something.
Okay.
You know, last week when they sent this out to say, okay, here we go, this is what we're, this is what we're doing. Because I think it was just last week, he said, yeah, okay, keep our foot in the door here. Or keep our foot in the door.
So, so when do they, when does the Environmental Facilities Corp. say whether or not you get the grant?
I think that it's going to be on their schedule. I don't know. I think they'll just make, typically they just make an announcement and say, hey, we reviewed everything and here's where the line is, here's all the projects are all scored and here's different lines. And they develop what they call the intended use plan and then they score the projects and they put them on that intended use plan. And then, you know, recall they had, they have the project funding line or something that's eligible, then they have that hardship line too, is that's one of the things that was qualified for before you went to the hardship line. And that kind of moves around, but once they send you a letter, that's kind of that part of the plot, but there was still stuff missed. We have to continue the process to continue to keep your foot in the door.
All right, well, the only reason I ask, and again, I don't know if these are the, on page two, it's got design start date January 10, 2020. That's not too far away. And I suppose you're supposed to know whether you got a grant before you start designing this project. Got a construction start date of November 1, 2020.
You can't leave anything blank on the application.
Well, so what, you just, so you just pick any, any date that really doesn't matter? To me, it's, I don't know. Again, I don't know how this works. It just, it just seems rather, and this isn't, it just seems rather silly if this is the process, that you can submit for a grant for a project you don't even know if you're going to do. And then there's other municipalities trying to get grants for projects that they're definitely going to do. And how does the state decide which one they're going to fund and which one they're not?
You know, if I do that, because we'd be a lot more successful in grant applications.
Yeah?
If they do that, I'd be a lot more successful in grant applications.
Check T for a target date. So a target date is not bad. You couldn't miss the target date by quite a bit if you're not a good archer.
For, for eight, nine years.
Let's get down to the project.
If it helps, I think they've already done the work for the grant and doing the seeker and, and doing the shipload stuff, so we probably owe them for the work that they did anyway, whether or not we submit this. So we might as well submit it and keep our foot in the door.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
The dates are very tentative, obviously, here, so.
Is that what you're saying?
Engineering design class.
Remember that question? Yeah. So, second.
I mean, submitting it doesn't mean we're going to get it, but at least if we submit it, we'll get it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So, doesn't hurt.
Okay, so before the board, there's a resolution to authorize Mayor Byers to sign and submit the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WEAT II, and New York State Intermunicipal Water Infrastructure IMG Program Clean Water Grant Application.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Leefki.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Turn to item seven, the resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign agreement with HR Works for HR Support Services and Employee Handbook Updates at a cost down to exceed $1,500 annually and a one-time fee of $2,895 to update our current employee handbook. Had an opportunity to look through the information that was sent. I believe that the work that they intend to do is kind of significant. Part of what they're looking at is there is a delineation, there should be a delineation between the employee handbook, things that are included in that and what our, what that code.
Policy manual.
Policy manual, yes, would include. So I think we have not really delineated that in the past and that would be good to update and to delineate those two things.
They were separate until about 2012 and then they were advised that if you ever read the employee handbook, they create just a policy manual. So that's why they all came back in through a policy manual and got rid of the employee handbook and the policy manual, so.
2012.
It was 11 or 12. Surely, presumably, we had a, the employee handbook record started in '10 and then sometime after the employee handbook went away and then went to a policy manual and everything was done by policy. Because then there was, I don't know, they had to do with the auditor. It seems to me that there was something with, when they had an auditor that wanted a review and had things, I don't know if you recall done, they wanted to, you know, if there was anything that was a benefit, it had to be done by policy that was reaffirmed by the board every so often. I guess the employee handbook would be reaffirmed by the board every year at the annual meeting too, I guess, those are the terms, but, you know, it's only going to apply to a lot more people too, or six maybe, because of the union. You know, anything in there, the union employees that's addressing the union contract, it's not going to tell the union contract with a press.
I don't recall. I think it was just former mayor Elders' idea to come back, so.
Come back.
Yes, yes.
Well, the only thing.
By a potential to separate. No, it's not a bad idea to separate. The one thing, the agreement doesn't mention anything about the $1,500. That's on page 12. The agreement's page 13. So when do you pay the 1,500? And when it says annual, does it?
They said that we can start it now so that I can start asking questions immediately or they said that we can put that off, but we already have some questions that we need to ask about.
So it would be from September 13 of 2019 through September 12 of 2020?
Yeah, he said it would be immediate.
All right, I just pointed out because there's nothing in the agreement that you're authorizing here that says anything about that. The agreement just applies to the employee handbook.
Okay, thank you.
Can you move to the policy manual?
Well, my, my guess would be that once they create the employee handbook, it will be up to the village internally to then instruct the policy manual to take out all the stuff that's now in the employee handbook.
Yes.
That's your end?
Yes, so I spoke with him the other day and he said that we would send them our current policies, which we have on our computer in the shared guide, and they would, they would recommend policies that we should have and then they'll integrate it so that it's applicable to us and then it would be our responsibility to handle the policy.
Did you send, you sending in secret $1,500 in here?
On the last page. Well, it's on page 12.
It's on page 12, but that's, doesn't really.
But it. Page 13.
He said it doesn't obviously say how to run the programs.
Right.
You got to pay it all at once or installments or?
My guess is it's all at once, but it doesn't say anything other than investment annual $1,500.
Okay, I'll get some clarification. Thank you.
The $2,895 is due in two installments. One, the final half, 50% is due upon receipt of the first grant, so they have to go through and they can come up with something, you know, after first grant.
Which I like, if we're not happy with it, you know, we're not already paying for it. And then that 1,500 also includes any policy change or any employee handbook changes that we make going forward as well.
So you're going to need, so we're going to need three grand upfront pretty much, right?
750.
29.
350.
Only you're splitting that half of five.
Oh, I do have 50%.
Yeah.
So 29.
that, putting together into that handbook, so. That kind of weeds out a lot of the things that we have to lie there in the handbook percent.
And then we can just take the sections out and then, because they're already basically separated in any way, just remember and then go slowly, you can update that on our own.
Mayor Consult, this is for virtual, having a virtual consulting with videos and stuff and I, we need a specific question and it's just in that section, right?
No, the call, I can call as included. It's unlimited calls and they will also, we have to request this in enough time, but they will also come out and we need them for a meeting as well. Like if I have a.
They may want to be checked back.
Any other questions?
I'd like to see the rough draft.
And I would ask for a motion to authorize the village clerk to sign agreement with HR Works for HR Support Services and Employee Handbook Update at a cost down to exceed $1,500 annually with a one-time fee of $2,895 to update our current employee handbook.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Abalito.
Aye.
Trustee Balke.
Aye.
Trustee Nancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Turn to item number eight, discussion regarding the Kittleberger part of the circle. If I was reading this through, I believe that occurs in that circle that delineates the change from public to private. Kittleberger, that very large. Kittleberger, that very large paved area, or semi-paved area, the roundabout there, and things that could be done or would be done there. Jake, you might want to elaborate a little bit on that.
I'm, basically, since I thought the board was moving in here that I could draw on, but it's probably best if I don't, so I'm gonna pull up Google Maps real quick just to show everybody. But yeah, right at Kittleberger, we'll always describe it as the whistle. Look at the parcel maps, it looks like a big whistle, you know, squared up, or Kittleberger Park, and we've had an amusement there. Turnaround before the developments, there are sorts of sixties, once the development went in and it was developed, we continue, you know, our turnaround in that area. But it was never, there was an intent to dedicate it, it never really got dedicated, but it's been a public ground now for ten years, and through July, it becomes, it becomes a village, growing as it was dedicated, if the village has been doing, I guess, maintenance and activities, we haven't been following things like that. I've been having to do much more than that, because of working ours. But we, now, if you go, if you look down there, I'm just pulling it up now. Show there, if you go down there, this, it's just the Wild West, I guess, is the way that's been described. You know, cars come in from Blue Vista Trail, Seasons Trail, and Kittleberger Park, they all kind of meet in the middle there. There's no real traffic control, there's no flow of traffic, there's no way to, you know, I guess human nature, if you're coming from Blue Vista Trail and turning left on Kittleberger Park, the intelligent thing to do would be to kind of go to the right and swing around and go out Kittleberger Park, but, you know, the number of parked cars we get, there's not a lot of intelligent people behind the wheel, because they're driving, so. Before we get into an issue there, I want, you know, if it's ours now, and we can take it over, and we can do something. So one of the things we kind of sketched up and worked with well, when we looked over, is having, basically, some islands or medians just painted there, and directing traffic around, making it a circle. I've also reached out to the homeowners association and the apartment complex to see if there's interest. If we could put a circle in the center and curb it, and have grass area there, would they take it over to do plantings on it, do some landscaping, some flowers, and things like that, that's their neighborhood, that's improved, you know, prove that they could work together and do that, and we would continue to, you know, plow and everything else. So that's what we're looking at, the reason, you know, one of the main reasons for engineering, if you can see where it says Mill Creek there, and I guess it says Mill Creek, it's covered together, there's two culvert pipes that run under there, and they're not that awful deep there. So I would make sure when the engineers make them out and do the survey, because if we put curb there, it doesn't end up in the creek. You know, there's not a lot of room, but that's why they get paid the big bucks, to make sure that, you know, we're doing it right, and sort of be able to support, you know, the excavation and the curbing there and everything else, but that's basically the area, you know, right in, right in here. And I don't know if, that we had sketches, but we would do, you know, like a little triangle here, a little triangle here. We looked at all sorts of different ways, and a little triangle here, and then have a circle, you know, raise a circle in the middle there. We looked, tried to make it a T-intersection, but being that we plowed there and it's public, you know, then we'd have to back up a lot, turn, back up, plow, that way, if we can drive around and plow, plow towards the center, even if we go backwards in that area and we get towards the center, it's probably the safest way to go when you're driving forward and not backing up. We're trying to improve this, I guess, the safety of that area, and how it functions there. And then again, working partnership with the, you know, doing a agreement with the homeowners association and the apartment complexes there, and you know, if they don't want to do anything, we're gonna have a grass, you know, grass circle there, and we put it up all occasionally, but there seems to be quite a bit of interest in-
Well, they've been in before, haven't they?
Yeah.
They've been in before, trying to discuss that with us, and how we could do it, and who was responsible, so I think this is good.
We've been talking about it for a while, we couldn't do anything until we owned it, you know, now, you know, now that the ten-year period has expired, and now we can, you know, now to, that part of it, it's a building street, now we have the opportunity to make some improvements, so. And for that, for those improvements to engineering, as I said, that's, I guess, they got sixty-six hundred, was it sixty-six hundred and fifty bucks, come up with plans, do the survey, and things like that, people have plans to do that. That's not to make the improvements, and it's, and we gotta get somebody to do those improvements, and we'll have to come back and say, hey, here's what we want to do, here's how much it's gonna cost. You know, so even if it's, you know, we could try to do it with paint simply to start with, but that's, you know, obviously in the winter time, that makes it tough, and people don't typically follow paint. But they will, they will listen to a curb. Most people will listen to a curb.
Were you naming it somewhere there, Jake, when you said that?
No, she said she did, when you-
I know.
Right by berries, I don't know how it happened, came out of nowhere.
They would evaluate the design drawing, do you pick the chosen improvement? When we get all done with the third one, the design drawing that we've, is apropos to weird.
Will and I came up with a very, very nice sketch, but I don't think anybody could fill it up. It was, that's what we, you know, like I said, we've been giving around for quite a while, and trying to figure out, can we make it a T, can we do this, can we do that? What do you bring, and-
Have a size room that goes up and over, or some apartments towards the back, and something that comes underneath.
Well, it's, it's Kittleberger down to be, into the private drive before you turn, you know, along north on there, it's a straight shot, so people get whipping through there, and the neighbors and area, you know, that part of it's a private drive, I think if they slow down and go around the circles, hopefully they'll-
Well, that's it, right, when I went down there and I looked at it, months ago, a year ago, that was the same, you know, that goes slowing down a little bit. Because it is a straightaway, they just-
Yeah, it's-
So Jake, where it says under project understanding, the last sentence is, village equipment and workforce will be used to construct the project. Are you saying now that may not be the case?
Well, they're saying that that's, I guess, that's not part of it, we could, we're not gonna, the curbing, we're not gonna install, you know, whether it's granite curbing, concrete curbing, we're not set up to install the curbing. In fact, I think anybody would, you know, hire, there's companies that do that. So, you know, we may do some portion of it, but it's not, you know, certainly installing materials and things like that, but as far as the curbing, for sure, is something that we wouldn't do, and painting, we'd perhaps contract either, contract with the county, who does the street, the striping, the road striping, or one of the companies that does the striping.
Well, along with the design drawings, will they also include like an estimate of the cost to complete the improvements then? For purposes of budgeting, and, you know?
Typically, they do, and it's-
It doesn't say that in here, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, you know what?
It just says LaBella will develop design drawings, and I'm just thinking, because they might have thought that the village was gonna do work, that they didn't have to provide any cost estimates.
Well, including miscellaneous expenses, I think, miscellaneous expenses, I don't know.
I thought, I was gonna, why don't I, you know, just from the table, I'll go back and would say, hey, we're gonna need cost estimates, so.
Because I would assume that this wouldn't happen until sometime next year.
Right, yeah.
Actual work.
Yep, exactly.
And then you're gonna have to figure out, if you're gonna hire it out, where's the money, how they're gonna pay for it.
Right.
Because it obviously wasn't in this year's budget, either.
No, it wasn't, and this is something that we, I think when we were doing the budget, we didn't know we had the term yet, so.
Right.
Exactly.
So yeah, so they could just give you an estimate, then you could use that way to cut together a budget or something.
Let me make sure that they can provide, and see what that does, you know, if they're, you know, they might say, all right, right cost estimates, and we had some amount more, too, so. Yep.
Yeah, it couldn't be that much, you know, a couple hundred bucks or something, maybe.
I hope. They're gonna know what they need to put into it, so.
Right, they're gonna, they're gonna design it, so.
So, thank you.
Should be just going on the state, you know, see what the, what the contracts have been awarded for specific items, pay items, so. All right, thank you.
Item number nine, the discussion on sewer treatment advisory committee, looking at information that I was provided, what I do not see, that we approved at the last board meeting, in terms of the makeup of this advisory committee, first of all, I see that it's limited, or would, shall be composed of the following seven members, and I think that there's more than seven that I see listed, but also, I do not see anybody from the town, so I have a question on that.
No, we weren't going to, we were only gonna do this for the village, that's what we proposed back then, and we made motion.
The motion on tape is-
I know, we, Jake and I listened to both meetings. The motion is approved, and then somebody has another discussion, and oh, maybe we can do this, and it, both meetings, it's not really figured out. Because we had stated that it was only the village, this is all we were going to worry about right now, make them aware of it. I mean, Jake and I never said that we would have that, and I didn't think that it was in the motion, do you remember, though?
Well, you just approved the minutes tonight, from August twenty-second.
Yeah.
In the minute, I just looked.
I know, I saw it.
Wanna hang on a second? And I'm gonna read the minutes, the board discussed forming a projects steering committee with the town. And then it goes on to say, Mayor Byers asked for a motion to form a steering committee, and it got approved, you voted for it. So it says with the town, I don't recall any discussion of a, of a sole village committee.
If I got it, it was at the workshop after that meeting, there wasn't a discussion or resolution, I think that's what Christine Lancy wants to do tonight, is a resolution for this committee, because the discussion at that time centered around a, I guess, a pre-committee, and they were back and forth on the need for the pre-committee. But I think that was, in fact, that's what I think you called it, it was a pre-committee to, before the steering committee, because the discussion at that time was, the steering committee was the next step, that's, once you decide, you know, whether it's a good idea or not.
Yeah, because we went back over that meeting again.
Right, the discussion at workshop, more or less, I don't, I don't think that the rest of the board spoke to it, or seemed like the topics that were being brought up would not be a committee-type related items. Sorry, they would be more like work as a board and work with Jake around the things that came up, like scope. Those things that came up wouldn't have anything to do with this committee, that would be internal to this, this board. That's what I-
This is, after we went through all of this, we were bringing it back to the board, and then you guys were gonna be able to decide. All we wanted to do is get information out to people.
Well, I think that's, taking everything into consideration when we were drafting this, that's why, you know, I put in there the, one of the missions, is to clarify the information available to village board and village residents regarding the village's SDP, and a consideration of alternatives pursuant treatment by providing, to the decree, correct all information derived from that listing, consideration of the impacts of the alternatives by the residents in terms of great services provided, and levels of service such information, it's up to how it's gonna be delivered, for instance, for each address, or delivery method. But then the mission, I guess that's the purpose of mission, I'm gonna say advisory committee is tasked to compile questions and answers, not just, not just forming questions, it's compiling the questions and those answers to issues relating to and arising from studies of the village's sewer complaint, consideration of alternatives pursuant treatment, emphasis shall be placed on the identification and consideration of future negative and positive impacts to the village residents. But I think that's what they were, you know, in the intent, that's, I guess, the takeaway from the workshops, what we were actually, what I tried to do, or if you were trying to do is, okay, it's, the way that it seemed like this committee wanted to be formed, if there was a committee, or we even thought, I think you guys talked about maybe not a committee, maybe a panel, whatever it was.
I just kept calling it information session, because it's not, I don't know if it's a committee yet, and if you're bringing up all those other topics. And like, then, like, then what are we sharing, it's information, what are we sharing?
I don't know.
Are we sharing Peter's study, are we sharing Clem's studies, are we sharing?
Oh, no, we're sharing, I mean, what we're sharing with this committee, from Peter to Clem, to Marcia, everybody, we're putting everything out there.
Yeah, let, it's for them to have, to have questions, it's-
We're not choosing sides.
To get their perspective, you know, there's, there's a residents' perspective, the businesses' perspective, and industries' perspective, they're all represented. And would have a different perspective than the board does, or the employees would, or people that are associated with it, so to be able to get that perspective, and make sure that there's confidence, whatever, you know, it's a tough decision, whatever decision you guys have to make, is that there's confidence that the perspectives of the affected people and the stakeholders be addressed and considered.
They really wanted to have this when I sat down with all of them, the various ones, they were really, really interested, because they said they had not seen any numbers from anyone. So, I said, well, we can give you everything, you know, and that, I don't, you know, it's up to them to make a decision. I mean, that's why we, I put bill sheet on it, I mean, let everybody, I mean, you guys can all say no, if you want to, when it's done, but at least I wanted to get the information out there, so that's it. And they seem to want to listen to it. We've got very much to look forward to, so. So, anyway, I'd like to make the motion to form the village sewer treatment plan advisory committee, is that still a major committee?
You created it, and you could call me, you know, I don't, just because I have a different opinion, mean, I'm right or wrong.
Well, that's what I like, I like the motion.
I have a problem with November thirteenth, if that's going out late, the park.
Well, I thought we were told we had till November fifth to make the decision to give it to you on the thirteenth.
I don't remember any conversation on-
We just said, I thought we had it-
The fifteenth or the fifteenth, it was October fifteenth.
No, no.
Every bell saying, I don't want this one out to December.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll put in there, and we'll look at when the board meetings are, and- Could we get some input from the town, or this committee?
Not on this one, I want, I just want-
Well, what if, what if, what if, isn't there certain information that this committee is gonna need from the town?
Yeah, we're gonna have it all from the beginning.
No, no, not that, no, I mean, like, for example, there's, you know, this issue with the collection system. You know, the town doesn't want to own the collection system, and I don't blame them, you know, it's, they got their pipes, the village keeps their pipes, so, in my view, there's-
We could do that, yeah.
You, so, so there's two options, you know, you gotta consider, all right, how many, if the village is gonna maintain the collection system themselves, how many people do you need to do that, and what does it cost? Or perhaps an alternative would be to go to the town and say, we'll contract with you, you maintain our pipes, just bill us, and what would that cost? So you have a comparison, now how are you gonna get an answer to that with nobody on the town, on this committee?
Well, I think the committee is all this way, it was to form questions and answers, I would envision the committee itself, it would be a letter, hey, we're on this committee.
You're never gonna get, you're never gonna get things done by, not even by November fifth, let alone a sooner date, with a seven-person committee, it's, I don't think that's realistic, myself.
I've been telling since we met last October, no, actually, two Octobers ago, when the town worker, or the town, when the engineer came in and presented that this is completely backwards, we're seeing that something is technically feasible without asking the questions, and every time they ask a question, all right, well, how would it impact our residents, because ultimately, that's what we work for, is our residents. How is this gonna impact our residents, how is this gonna impact our users? And well, that'd be through an IME, that'd be through an IME, and to agree to do something, and then work out the details later, and then find out that it might be beneficial to you, or it might be really bad for you, is completely backwards, I think. I think you should say, okay, we have this concept, what- I think you should say, "Okay, we have this concept, what will this concept look like, let's get more information, then we'll find out if it's gonna be a good idea or not, and then decide to proceed, but we're asked to proceed before we know if it's a good idea." It, it's, you know, it, it seems completely backwards, you know, it, it really does, it's, it's, you know, it seems like putting the cart before the horse.
If you do a constant, like you say, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but I think then it can, why not have that conversations with both groups, you know, and so those questions can be asked, maybe someone has an idea that we're not thinking about, you're not thinking about when you have both, both parties, I think, so, so then the other part is...
Last week we didn't run a committee and now, now we want...
No, no, I, I never said I didn't want, I didn't want, I wanted a, we voted for the joint committee, that's what I thought when you were doing the bridge and I voted, and that's obviously what the minutes reflected. Then we talked about the board, you bring up good points, I said there were good points, there's no plugging, it's that, that isn't a committee here, I think, that's us working with you and saying, I can, my boss could tell me tomorrow, "Hey, we gotta cut three or two FTEs because there's no money in the budget," and you would, we would look to you to say, "All right, how are you gonna do it? How can you cover this?" And that's what we need to get from you, is those type of informations. And then, obviously, you being on here is important, but you have Judy and you have John coming about, right, so, three people that it's publicly clear that are heavy one-way presenting information, that's...
I, I honestly, I don't know if this is a good idea because we don't have enough information yet to know if it's a good idea.
I agree, that's why we should work together.
And part of this, that's why we said is this committee would develop the questions and the answers to be able to advise the board and let the board know whether, from their perspective, I don't work for my job, I work for the residents, right? So if the residents all, you know, if they, if they look at this and say, "It's a great idea, great, let's figure out how to make it happen," you know, if they think that combining it's a good idea, or if the industry does, or the business people that are really pretty successful business people...
I just think that's do, do it together.
Right, so, we don't work for together, we work for our village residents, we've heard from everybody else, but we work for our village residents, that's who we're responsible to. Obviously, it's not a, you know, at the, you know, let's throw everybody else under the bus, but that's who we work for first and foremost, that should, to get, at least get their perspective, and then there would be a steering committee if we decide that, hey, this is a good idea, let's figure out how to perform, then there's a steering committee.
Right, don't disagree that either, but some of the answers you can't have 100%. Jake can say, "Look, it's gonna cost us more money this way," because that was the, the worst-case scenario without us knowing if we get a, a grant, there's grants out there, they're up to 40% for combining things.
Right.
So we just, so that's what I'm saying when we don't have all the answers, is we don't know all of them, so to give them an honest answer, you know, of course it looks higher right there now because we have debt, they don't, you know, there's a lot of things that, that come along.
Cause our debt was coming because of the investment of...
We're just saying...
What I'm saying now, would require $5.7 million just to upgrade because things are getting at the end of their life cycle, not $25 million.
Right, and a committee works, and a committee works together to solve these issues, if, if it turns into an argument all the time, it's not beneficial either, so that, that's also concerning, you know what I mean?
I have to start to figure out how to get the perspective because people don't know what to ask if they don't know anything's going on or anything about it. So when the residents have called up, they wrote in two or three pages of questions, don't have the answers to it, they have perspectives to offer that frankly, we don't, we don't have, and that's why when, you know, when I was on the board, I always figured, I want everybody's perspective because if I was really, if I knew everything, I'd be home with my family right then, instead of sitting around here on Thursday nights, you know? So I figured, it's, it's gonna impact people, people, it has the potential to impact people good or bad in ways that I can't consider because I'm not them. So if there's a representative sample of the people that it's gonna impact, you can get a good perspective and say, "Hey, this is a great idea," you know what, the son is, A's a good idea or B's a good idea, because now I know, get a sense of how it's gonna impact the people, you know? And it's, I think, you know, Jude has called around and got a really bright and talented list of people to, to work on this, and frankly, on your, on your behalf, you know, just to investigate things and say, maybe, maybe it's developing questions that you guys haven't thought of yet, or I haven't thought of yet, or, and, and maybe some of them are gonna say, "No, that's not important to me," you know, this isn't or that isn't, so, just, I think it's a brief, it's, you know, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of work, but I think it's something brief that they're trying to get people together and say, "Here's this, here's this report, here's this report, here's, here's the information," shoot, what questions would you have? And, and that's purposely why no one in the village involved is a facilitator, no one in the village is gonna run the meeting or turn it, and that's why I think she set it up with somebody that's kind of an independent, you know, you direct this, here's the, here's the...
And many of the people that I talked with, they already stated they were gonna go to the town, so that's, I just wanted them to have the correct information, have it all, and I don't think, and they didn't have any, because they didn't have town information. We're going to give them that. I mean, it's not like, you know, we're just putting everything that the village is doing, we're giving them absolutely everything. And if we need to have Peter there, or we need to have Clem there, well then we'll just, that, we'll do it. We need advisors, if we need art from town, we can get, we can bring art in. I just want everyone to have all of the information so they know how, whether it's gonna benefit them or not. It's their businesses, and we, like, like Jake said, we work for them. I'd rather have it that we were all together, but right now, the people that are paying us are village residents, so I'd like to think about that first.
Jake, do you think we all understand that? I'm just saying, we, we, you're not gonna be able to share all the information because there's unknowns both sides.
Sure, there absolutely is, we know that, but we can, we can still explain that to town too, that this is how much we know now, if this happens, then that probably could happen, but we can at least share it.
And that's why I think we put in there to the degree practical, you know, you, you try, you know, get down to a certain one, at least, there's a point where you gotta know what you don't know, and understand that there's something there that you don't know, but then be able to consider that, but in the absence of, of any information or of anything else, you don't even know what you don't know yet, you know? It's only you look at it, you know? I think you should have somebody like Barry Dean on there, or, you know, just...
No, that's the town, no.
I mean, I certainly, I would expect to me, when, when we're writing this up, what I envision is, committee say, "Okay, here's what we need to know, let's see if we can meet this time and get these people in to help answer those questions or to help get that, get that information," and that was, uh, that was, you know, the impact. And it's not that, this isn't the spirit, this is, I guess, I don't know what's the best idea, or best answer yet. And, uh, I think we'll certainly be closer, you know, with this group that's assembled and knowing that.
Don't you know enough regarding the plant? Why would there be a need for John to be part of this advisory?
Well, we're talking about the sewer, he's a chief plant operator and he knows the system really well, he's got 20-something years of institutional knowledge that may be beneficial.
He's certainly, as opposed to you, I don't see why we have necessarily...
He has more information, I think, than Jake, he's been doing it longer, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, if I focuses on things, especially sewers, a portion of what I do is a very small portion of what I do, because, you know, there's lots of other things to do, so...
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying too, I mean, if, if we want, we need to put art on from the town, that's fine, because he takes care of their sewer, so...
Or we can leave the work, we might take John off as a thing, and then it, you know, the committee can ask whoever they want questions, you know, they can come up and, or say, "Hey, we wanna talk to this person in the work, we need information about how big this is and that is," and let's figure it out.
November 13th to me, however, far out there. Cause your meeting is once every two weeks.
All right, so if you have a form...
Yeah, that was the difficulty, is getting people into meetings, into a conference.
So is that a minimum of every, once every two weeks?
Yes, exactly.
Do you think there'd be a repeat of all the same questions we've already asked?
I have no idea, I don't have their businesses, so I don't know.
I guess, yeah, that's the...
I don't know what they're gonna answer.
It's the unknown, I guess.
Right.
I'm certainly, I'm certain that they'll probably have some of the same questions, but I'm certain that they'll have some that we...
Still seems like it's a question and answer type of informational meeting, not a committee on a specific, so, seems like the way you're talking about it, they ask questions, you provide answers.
No, I think, and I think, I didn't envision, I envisioned them developing questions and developing answers to those questions.
Yes, yes.
Okay, what do we need to know? Hey, we don't know that, like you said, there's a lot of things that are unknown, um, as far as, that they own agreement, so, might say, "Okay, what are the elements of an agreement? We have to ask," and then some notes or emails to the, to the town board and the village board saying, "Hey, if there were an agreement, how would these four items be addressed? How would these six items be addressed?" You know, you know, obviously, give it your perspective on it, or, then you can get that information back, so...
So, the motion's on the table.
Kind of like Don said, I wish we had some representation from the town, so it would speed this process up, so you won't have to ask these questions, what about this, somebody would be right there to answer that question.
That's why I said art from the town runs their sewer, we can have him at there, I don't want a board member, so I already answered that, I said, "Yes, we can have him." He have a lot of information in the meetings that we've had with him, so I'm sure he can answer the questions because he's done it for a while.
Yeah, it'd be good if he was somebody like that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that'd be...
If he's willing to participate.
I'm sure he will, he's a good guy.
Yeah, just to speed it up, like I said, so you're not, have your meetings in...
Well, I don't know who sat on this for how long. I'm not even gonna go there. I'm doing this now as fast as I can with the information that I have.
Just want me to add, the deputy commissioner of public works?
Yep.
The deputy commissioner of public works for the town?
Yeah.
Shouldn't you ask that person in advance?
Who is?
Before you're already putting him, committing him to these meetings?
I don't know.
I think that's what I didn't try to do.
We would like to, yeah, since we just got brought on.
Just send a paycheck to the town.
So your committee would be done, I just don't like going out to the... Your delivery would be done and it would come to the board for a vote, or it would come to the board...
Just the information, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be voting, there's nothing to vote on.
Right, we just wanna give...
It's just whatever the committee discusses are gonna bring forward to the board.
A report.
Right, it's like a report, there's no... No, because I still think there's those on, there's, I don't know, there's still those things that Jake wants to talk about that would be outside the committee, you know, that we're supposed to talk about, so, I don't think it'd be ready to vote after that.
Right, but I don't, I'm not even sure if it'd be outside, any of your thoughts about things like the, the true impacts, because that's, that's why the committee has made it residents and businesses and things that would be impacted by that, you know, that's, I think that's part of the reason, is because they're taxpayers, so, they say, "We, we determined that, yes, because of these, these four services," and I'd like to think that stuff we do is important, so these four services that we pride, if, if they can, you know, if, if we need to increase our, our general budget to be able to provide these services, if we, whatever we can do, but ultimately, that's, how's that gonna impact, you know, impact what we have there, so, the innocent people are gonna be impacted by that, so...
So the committee is tasked to compile questions, questions and answers to issues related to underwriting the program. Who's gonna answer those questions?
So whoever, whoever has the answers, if they're asking, if one of their questions, for instance, is, "What did the town do in this circumstance?" That question would have to be forwarded to the town for, for answering. If there was, you know, the village, you'd be, this, the village would answer, or maybe an engineering thing and say, "Hey, Clem," or "Hey..."
Yes. So we may not get answers to any of those.
Do you want to see a list, if you like to see the questions generated, yeah?
No, I don't know, well, yeah, I think that we should see the questions, but anything that's submitted to this committee should be in front of this board first, if I understand, the email went out to a bunch of residents or community people, this board was not involved in that email, and you were not involved in that email, so I think, um, that the board should be copied and in those type of communications. And then, yeah, what's being presented, there's numbers from all different people that don't match up, I mean, what, what is being provided, right? Not saying, I'm not saying whose numbers are right or wrong, I'm just saying, a lot of different information.
You're rehashing the same numbers all over again, from various points of view.
So that's all I'm gonna, I'm asking, if we say yes, just, whatever's gonna be presented in the committee, say you put a packet together and that's being presented in the committee on Tuesday, then the board sees that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's all, which is not un-normal, it's kinda...
No, I think it would be, you know, I would envision yours, the BNL's BER and the BLS BER, the different things in areas.
Maybe some other stuff you think helpful, I'm just asking, let, let us know, you know, should this be billed a package?
We can make sure that you guys are absolutely aware of the meeting.
I think that, you know, by evaluation of both those types of numbers and, and the impact on the, I would envision the, the impact on the, we're actually, you know, with, with Marcia and her accountant and they paid a lot of money for review and that would be important information to have, because ultimately, it's, you know, basically, in my eyes, there's two different perspectives on this, there's two different approaches that we're taking, you know, that we're taking in the... in these evaluations. One was a capital investment approach, one was an asset management approach. And so, they derive from different sets of numbers and two different perspectives. Ultimately, our residents, I would argue, don't care. They want to know how it's going to impact my wallet. And that's what we're trying to see, if this committee can get down to the how it's going to impact my wallet. So, once they flush the toilet, they just want it to go away from it. You know, they want it gone. And they don't care where it goes, who does it, what happens. They just want it magically gone, and the least, bless you, the least impact on the wallet is possible. And I think that's ultimately what this committee's, I would envision trying to determine, is the impact on the wallet. Because who does what and where it goes places.
I agree with you.
Well, that's why there's, you have to have business owners on here, because business owners don't think about just now. It's what's better for my wallet now and the future.
Absolutely. That's, and that's a perspective that we don't have. You know, I, maybe I certainly tried to have that perspective, but they've proven that they're good at employing that perspective. But they've got some very good and successful businesses around, so I figure they have valuable insight.
Yeah.
And if we get it for free, don't tell them. We might have to buy donations or something.
No, we get free coffee at the chambers, so that's good. Yeah.
I, I agree with Jerry that, that we should at least have a look at the minutes from these meetings.
Pre.
And, pre, pre-minutes.
That's what I was.
Not pre-minutes.
The agenda?
Pre-agenda. So, if you're going to be with a committee and you're going to put a packet of information together to hand out to them, that, that board should have the exact same packet that the committee needs.
Oh, yeah.
We need to know.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's going to be mostly slides and stuff like that.
Might be a lot of crap involved. I'm not really.
Marcia's better. She'll help, she'll help.
So, Daryl's still doing some addition over here, so I may take a couple of minutes. He wasn't a math teacher.
I think if you authorize this committee, it's subject to the open meetings law. So, you have to post notice to the meetings, tell the Webster Herald when they're holding these meetings, so you can go. They're open to the public. You can't exclude people from these meetings.
If the trustees are there?
No, no. Trustee doesn't even have to be there. A public body is defined in the open meetings law as any entity for which a quorum is required, and you've got in these rules about a quorum, is required in order to conduct public business. This is certainly public business that they're going to be conducting, and which consists of two or more members, performing a governmental function for an agency or department. Well, technically, the village is an agency of the state of New York. Well, it's no big deal, as long as some of your members become private.
Oh, I'm posting. Okay.
All right, you're, you're, you're the ex officio secretary, going to keep the man on steward.
Well, so.
So, if you're asking for at least one meeting.
Something you're interested in.
And if you say that, yeah, they.
Black Chevy Cruze and a black Ford.
So, you're asking for at least one meeting, which you could accomplish every two weeks. So, what happens if you are asking for more than that? Because this says at least one. So, this is kind of up in the air, and how are you letting the public know?
And it will all depend on when everybody is available. They have many businesses, and I've got them down to Tuesdays and Wednesday mornings. So, that's, that's as far as I've gotten. If we have to have three meetings, what happened? I mean, I'm not sure. We don't exactly know when we're going to be able to do it. I got the dates that the, at the conference room, that the chambers open, and if that is not, every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, I coordinated that with everybody else and their schedules. So, we are going to do it to the best of our ability. I don't know exactly. It might be two meetings. It might be three meetings.
Could you publish a notice and saying that there's a meeting every Tuesday and Wednesday for the life of this committee, and then have it canceled, and then at least it was noticed?
There you go, maybe.
I mean, I don't know if that means, I don't want to mislead, but I'm saying, hey, just in case I had one, we're going to meet every Tuesday and Wednesday. And then you could, you know, check the website for, for updates on the meeting. Then you could say, hey, the meeting was canceled. You know, then you do, you know, meet your meeting publication requirement, wouldn't it?
Yeah. We'll make sure.
Don, I wasn't sure that's why I was asking.
What?
I wasn't aware that that happened.
Well, anytime a municipality forms any kind of a committee, it's subject to the open meetings law. But you, you know, if the meeting is scheduled at least one week in advance, that then you have to give public notice to the media and post at least 72 hours before the meeting. If the meeting is scheduled on less than one week, in less than one week's time, then you give notice as, to the extent practicable. So, it can be an email. It can be a phone call, or the Webster Herald, or whatever. And then you post it at a reasonable time prior to the meeting. Personally, I'm not a fan of Jake's idea of just putting it in there and then canceling all these meetings.
I don't want to do it. Totally saying that.
I don't think that's going to be intended.
No, it isn't.
No, that's why I asked, people like that would be exactly their requirements, but not really the great plan. But in the absence of any other plan, it's.
Well, it may meet, it may meet the spirit, but not the intent of.
More was better than less.
It's not a big deal, as long as just somebody remembers to do it. You know, you don't need to publish agendas or whatever. You just got to say a meeting is going to happen. You don't have to say what's going to happen at the meeting.
We might be able to get two meetings in two weeks. We don't know.
Personally, I think the 31st of October is stretched out long enough. It could then be presented at a workshop, where at least we would be able to, at a workshop, discuss it. And if it turned into a vote on the 13th, it should be the 14th, I think, would be, rather than, let's get it delivered to the board on the 14th, and then go vote on it or think about it on the 24th or whatever.
Is there an urgency that we have to get this done at a particular time? I don't know. Is there something, I don't know?
Is there a reason why?
An urgency that it has to be done before November 13? I, I mean, seriously, do you know? I mean, I don't know.
When does the town need to know whether or not we're going to consider going with, we can put that's a good idea to separate?
I have no idea.
Engineers.
I don't know. The discussions that you've had, I don't know.
The town's going ahead regardless of what we do.
Maybe calling to Ron and say, hey.
Don's got the timeline right there.
I mean, we'll do the best we can with the group of people that we have to get them into meetings in a timely fashion, but I can't demand them to do that.
All right, now you have two, four, six, seven. It'd have eight weeks from today if you went to the 31st of October. If you went to the 7th, which is a workshop in November, you'd have nine weeks. Certainly, I seem to me enough time to hash out the questions that you'd have for the, for this.
Would you like me to change this to advisory committee? It includes activities by the 31st of October. You shall, you say it was the 7th for the.
The 5th, you're correct. You're correct.
In the workshops, the Tuesday, the 5th, yeah.
Can be scheduled, have the last meeting, and then whoever's typing, or whether or whether going to make a presentation to the board, you do so. It's really not open for government, the workshop. So, the board listens. Information is presented.
Oh, it's election day. I don't, yeah.
November 5th is election day. Would be no workshop.
Oh, there's a workshop.
There's a workshop.
Yeah, we'll put in a little.
His rooms tied up, but.
We've always done that.
Yeah.
Do you have the person from Serex?
Yes, I'm meeting with them on Monday. They have, the environmental folks, and they're trying to figure out, it's one of the environmental folks, or which could be facilities, I don't remember, but they said that they've got interest in deciding who the right one is, who's best suited. Up to you, sir.
31st presented to us on the 5th.
Yep.
And then we would have the 13th.
Is what possible?
Otherwise, if it's presented to us on the 13th, we're going to be putting it out to 27th or 25th. I think eight, I think eight weeks. Well, I am not the one necessarily making this proposal, because this is not my idea.
I already made a motion.
I think she did.
Through the.
Three times, I think.
Through the 13th, got the original.
Oh, no.
No.
She didn't do an updated one.
We did not break it all down into.
She wants to make a motion, then we got a contingent upon, blah, blah, blah.
Well, the motion would be for October 31st and November 5th.
We just want a motion.
And then keeping us in the loop as a board.
Of course.
Do we draw a motion?
I don't think so.
Don, do we have to make an addendum here for 31st? Does that matter?
The minutes would reflect what we're saying. I don't think so.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
So, the motion, the motion is to form this switch treatment plan in fact.
To be completed.
Well, I think you should reference whatever you want to call this handout that was given to you, because it's got the parameters of this committee. Who's going to be asked in the makeup of the committee? And you're just amending the duration of the activity to the 31st of October and deliver it by November 5th.
I second that.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lucky? Trustee Alito? Mayor Byers?
Okay, you have an item 10, resolution to authorize Jake Swinway to attend Nikon Public Works Training School at an amount not to exceed $1,100. When would you be going up there?
Apparently, it's Sunday night. It starts Monday morning at 7:00 AM. Breakfast, I don't want to miss that. But.
So, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, right?
Yes.
So, there is a resolution to port the board to authorize Jake Swinway to attend Nikon Public Works Training School at an amount not to exceed $1,100.
I'll make that one.
Trustee Nancy? Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lucky? Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Don, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not.
Um, Clark, Alex, you have anything?
Maybe one thing. We did close a couple accounts, because Marcia and I got back from training for our accounting school, and we learned that we don't need any checking accounts. So, we've cut down a lot, and now we've updated.
How many checking accounts do we have?
Like eight or nine. And you can pay checks to have like.
Oh, yeah.
A lot less.
All right, you're good.
I'm looking for the savings, sir.
Okay. Department of Public Works, Jake?
Well, we're, the majority of the summer projects are done. We're looking to do a little bit more, more like 40 park areas, because some of that park, the Cyclops and the drivers there. We're looking to make sure that we, we're shutting up all the rivers that are coming in now. Make sure all the old traffic, that's making, that's all you need. But if it's a half inch difference over the entire length of the street, it makes a considerable difference. So, but then, we're getting into leaf season, sadly. You know, it's like, we did brush this week.
We didn't brush this week, and so the leaf season's coming soon. So just remind people, I'll start now, do not put it in others or the street. All it does is flood the street and annoy your neighbors. So leave them alone. We'll get through it.
Um, sir, can I ask you something, Jake? Bike racks?
Bike racks? Can one even say bike racks? We gather bike racks in, they're in the...
I know. They have...
They're in the garage.
Yes.
We, Missy Rosenberg did a survey on them.
I know.
And so I'm obviously not a user of bicycles very much. So I figured, you know, ask the experts, the people that's going to impact. Where would you like them? So I sent out some pictures of where we wanted to put them.
Yeah.
And there's a couple that had some different options. So we were good on a couple. We sent out some more information today when she responded. So I envision the one going, there's going to be one in front of Barry's, one at Village Hall. She talked about the Village Bakery and one of that's parked. The Village Bakery, one was problematic because we really, it's just a parking lot back there. We own the driveway through. When I look parcel map again, it's a little wider and there's an area right into the planter there where we could put it. We're still in our property, so that's what we're going to do. I'm going to approach the business, the property owner down there and say, hey, can we put this one? It's still in our property, but it's in our right way or in that area that we own. But they have a planter in there. It's right here along the sidewalk. So I think it'd be a good spot. It's out of the way. We could park a bike. It'd be visible. So I would envision, long story short, the very ones should be going up pretty soon.
It'll be up pretty soon.
I would anticipate early next week.
Oh, I doubt you.
So we'll see then. Veterans Park. The other ones we're going to, they're going off of the sidewalks. You know, where there's areas. Barry's, one of the sidewalks really wide there. We got a spot and it doesn't impact anything. The other ones are going off the sidewalks. We're going to have to, we're going to dig down and put in some concrete. There is a base for those who attach to, so that'll just be a little bit longer.
Yeah, we should have a little gathering for that because she's worked really hard at trying to get that done.
So you got two on the south side of Main Street and one by the bakery.
There's one at Village Hall in front of Heather's office there, up the side. One at Barry's and one down, if you drive down there, Rock and Soul.
Yes, Rock, yeah, yeah.
So the east side there, there's an island in there where the sidewalk goes out in terms of we want it there. Then at the Veterans Park, we were looking just north of the entrance to the parking lot behind the businesses there. They've got the other, you want to say, you know, Village Webster on it there. So it's, you know, it's visible. People will be able to see it. The problem with that one is to make it anywhere else in the park, make it usable. It's going to be turned this way because bikes along the side, they don't fall into it. And if we put it, you know, perpendicular to the road, one way, and it's a cutout that says Village Webster, one way it's going to look really dumb, one way it's going to look really nice. So it's going to be Village Webster backwards, so we want to, you know, parallel with the road, so...
So nothing on the north side of Main Street?
North side of Main Street...
Along Main Street.
Not at this point. These are the first four and that's where everybody said, that was your vision. There is one on Lepin Park now where the old telephone, the telephone booth there used to be. The pavement used to be. There's one there, so, you know, people want to use it there. Go ahead. I think you're...
I thought it was getting swallowed.
It's not picking you up.
Yeah, but it's going to pick him up over the inside of his mouth.
Let him!
Now if I say something, they'll make me deny it.
It's not me, it's the viewers. It's the viewers who always say they can't hear you guys. It's not me. I don't care.
Don't shut the hell up.
I can hear you.
No, because, yeah, when I'm...
Yeah, when the viewers play it back on Facebook feed, you can't hear it. And that's why the mics are designed so we guys have to talk into them within two inches from the mic. If it's way up in the air or a foot away, you're not going to get contact with the mic.
Yeah.
Also, while I am speaking, multiple times in the past three months, some residents of the community have mentioned that you guys have your flags in the wrong positions. That possibly the American flag is supposed to be all the way to the other side. That one is supposed to be in the middle. It's up for debate. People are saying different things. I think it would be a good idea for us to figure out what the real way is for it to be for a board meeting because I know it's different rules for speaking, different rules for getting pinned, different rules for everything, and so...
And I've looked at this. Before I've looked at this, there is, you know, US Flag Code talks about how it's a slay. In a public meeting like this, they envision a speaker's podium and it's going to speakers' right. This, as near as we can tell, is the proper way, is the order of prominence in the, or excuse me, the American flag in place of prominence. This is the way. The flag code doesn't envision this situation very well. So our, then obviously, is the honor of the flag is put in this proper place. I guess until the flag code says something different, this is how it's always worked. And this is the intent, and if it's backwards, it's not being disrespectful. It's being confused by the flag code. So it seems to, uh...
Should the American flag be higher?
If it's...
It is.
If it's higher...
It is the highest one.
Yeah, it is the highest. There's...
But there's debate that it's supposed to go the other way. That the highest is supposed to be on the outside and come in. That's the debate that residents are bringing up.
At the same level of they're the highest and they're the equal levels of government, the American flag's always going to be highest. If it's hung with nation, different nations, I think, or in place of prominence. But when it's displayed like this, they said, I'd be more happy to see if anybody wants to look at the flag code and come up with something that's very clear and direct. This is, I interpret, I read the flag code, this is what it says. You know, I've reviewed it a few times and I sleep pretty good at I love America. So I don't know. We're good.
Okay. I would remind everybody that our next Village Board meeting is September twenty-sixth. And our Village Board workshop will be October first. So if there's nothing else, I'll enter in a motion to adjourn. On the favor, I oppose. Jerry, thank you.
Yeah, I know. He sent me the opposite. It reached the same text, so... I know. I know. The problem is that there is literature out there saying all of the above. That's the problem. There's like five other pieces of literature that prove the opposite. So it's like...